Right, we'll get underway again now. Just so everyone is aware of what the plan is, we're going to go through the rest of the funding requests, hopefully be finished by about five and then we're going to knock off. And the only thing remaining then is the wash-up item, which we'll do first thing in the morning because overnight it'll start, who work 24 hours as you're aware, who will look at the various spending and decide whether it's OpEx or CapEx or where it sits and then they'll come back to us with a very clear idea of where we're at before we make the final determinations.
In order that they do not have to work overnight, is there any chance, considering the workload, that we could actually make it 10 o'clock and they can come into work tomorrow morning and work within working hours?
If we get through these, 10 o'clock will begin to turn.
Well, if we get finished by four, they've got till five tonight.
I'm sorry, I fundamentally am meaning what I said yesterday about people working outside of work hours.
All right, let's see where we get to and then make a call at the conclusion of today's proceedings. So, I'm just going to go, I've been asked, yeah, I'll come back to you, councillor Wiley. I've been asked to just go through each of these so that I'm absolutely sure that none are missed. So I'm going to go through the list of funding requests and I'm just going to call them out and if you've got any, if there's any that you're interested in, please let me know. Yes. Well, hang on, Kavisham group, Kamenda group? Right, councillor.
So I've sent for a motion to the GSOs that council grants $50,000 to the Kavisham Community Group to assist in the completion of stages two and three of the Kavisham Reserve project.
$2,000?
Sorry.
Did you, what's the?
$50,000.
Oh, $50,000.
Split over to you.
No.
So, just before I go to questions, is there a second of this? Afraid I don't have a second it, fails for one of a second it.
Let's see, I'm almost in clarity about what it is. I mean, if it's our, if it's the reserve, I think it is, was a project and it's not the community group that's doing the project. It might be involved with the Zonk, but it's funded out of parks? Sure.
Well, I don't know, but.
Well, that's when we have some.
Well, hang on, what we need to know is more clarity. They asked, came and asked for $50,000. I haven't had a second around the table for it, so move on to the next. I've already, no, no. Let's get, let's get the process right here. It was put up, there was no second it, it's failed for one of a second it, we're moving on. Dunedin Symphony Orchestra. Tauru Marai. Councillor Lord.
I just think in terms, I don't really want to put a motion, it seems such a ridiculously small request. I'm wondering if we had about operational grants that we've already got, someone can get some signage and work with them.
We've done the, we've done the sign, we've, we've put up a sign that points down their driveway to say Marai down their driveway. There's a couple of other things they had asked for, one of which was, because they are, they don't have much in their funding, and one of which was a sign for out the front of their building that says who they are, so something that's vaguely attractive that says who they are. I couldn't even begin to give you a cost for that, could you, Rob? Like a sign outside on the street saying Tauru Marai? Say again? You wouldn't want to quote it, no, it's slightly all good.
Could I suggest five grand?
Yeah, and then they suggested assistance with the panels for over the. So that would certainly, that would certainly be a really good start for us, be able to say we can sort the sign and we can start talking about the panels over the entranceway.
And it'll be attractive and.
Yeah, 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 in a wooden frame kind of thing.
Order, right, we've got about three conversations going on, although there is a constructive one going on right here, so are you.
So the motion is that we make a grant of $5,000 to Tauru Marai for signage and other works associated with their request, subject to terms and conditions to be agreed by the chief executive, blah, blah, like the others.
Is there a second it?
I was doing it.
Right, councillor Lord, move councillor Vannevis, second councillor Lord, just so we keep the process right. Councillor Vannevis, can I invite you to speak to it?
No need, I think it's self-evident.
I'm just asking the CEO to.
No, so that's, that's exactly what I was referring to. They'd moved the sign that points, the sign was pointing people into their neighbour's house. They'd moved the simple sign that says Marai, the blue standard DCC sign. What they also wanted was another thing, I talked to Richard this morning. So this, this, this motion that has just been moved is absolutely in line with that email.
Right, are there any questions or any?
Oh, just a question, yeah, I'm just wondering if it would be possible, so you said you'd moved the one at the driveway, would it be possible also to get one perhaps from Tari Road in what the corner of Shetland Street or something, just like we would put a church sign or rodeo ground sign or Woodside Glen sign, those types of signs?
We'll, we'll work with them for what they want, but, yeah, that kind of thing. Oh, yeah.
Right, we'll move on to the next.
I just, I just have one question because Tania also wanted a sign when people get to Dunedin, were all the Marai, like if you're, like.
Did you?
Um, yeah, she did, she just, somewhere, I don't know, I don't know where, but, so when people get here.
Two speakers, it's not specified in here, but secondly, since the chief executive is going to be having conversations with them about what their requirements for signage are, it could be included in that conversation.
And that one might be better dealt with by brochures and the eyesight, for example, because any one place, it's hard pushed to pick a place that everybody will see, but we'll work on that with them too.
But I know Tania really was quite passionate about that.
Right, Dunedin Menity Society, Mayfair Fair and Traral Trust. Councillor Albert.
I was just wondering what support is available for someone like the Mayfair Fair or the Trust to have someone to walk alongside them when it comes to fundraising? Because I know it's a, it's a particular field of expertise. What resource have we got within council to do that?
I'd have to say, that may be appropriate. Sandy, are you open to give us a bit of history on what?
Mr Dixon or Mr. Yeah.
We have a capability fund, sorry, can you just watch the conversation?
Yeah, we have a capability fund which we run in partnership with the Atago Community Trust and they've already been in receipt of grants from that funding.
To, to help?
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Right, Ataga Hawke. Councillor Wiley.
Your worship, I was a little unclear what they actually came to us for and so I just thought, did the CEO have any comments to make on this and how we move forward?
Given our recent experience with the turf, staff's suggestion would be that we go away and work with Atago Hawke to do a full report in advance of council making any decision around funding. And so we would suggest that we do that work and bring that to the next annual plan, given what we think they're proposing is something similar to what's ended up happening at Logan Park. Whether that's the best outcome, we don't have a view because we haven't done the work, but that's what we would suggest.
So, Sandy, does that need to be?
We would need a recommendation from council to do that, should council be of a mind.
So councillor Wiley, I take you are moving exactly what Ms Graham just.
Ms Graham will draft that with the GSOs.
Yes, I would, I'd be happy with that.
Is there a second of this, councillor Elder? Want to keep this process, are you comfortable with what we've got in the way of loops or do you need Sandy on your shoulder? Well, can I? Cricket springs to mind. That's good. When are we going to, sorry, can we hear what that is, please?
That staff work with the Atago Hawke to do a full report in advance of council making any decision?
A full report to, to, for the next annual plan, which year is it?
So you're not, sorry, so you're not talking about something for this plan?
No.
Well, well, Ms Stephen can we speak to that? Can I speak to that? Sorry, couldn't I? Yes, yes, well, I'll ask councillor Wiley to speak to it the first instance and then you're next.
Yes, your worship, essentially I was unsure exactly when they walked away, what they actually wanted. So I think the motion that we will soon have up on the screen, I think is an appropriate pathway to move forward and deal with it.
Councillor Betzempa.
Well, I feel similarly nervous about this because of the lack of clarity in it and I do recall the original presentation and remember the reservations I had at the time when I supported the money that we granted to develop this turf, because it is a bit different, this Atago Hawke, sure, but it's essentially a facilities, facility of Kings High School, despite all the nice messages about the local community using it. And so I think it's extremely cheeky to be mild for them to come back and say, and by the way, would you manage it for us and do all the contract management as well? So I'd like to see a full breakdown of that and it would appear that this motion will achieve that for next year.
Any further speakers? There being none, I'm going to put it, all those in favour, please say aye. Against? Carried. One coast, now, we did that, sorry, didn't cross it off, sorry. Right, now on to the list of requests for resourcing of DCC activities, most of which have unspecified values. I'm just going to go through these and if anyone had, in the same way. So tracks and trails, we've got 26 submissions on this. All right, councillor Elder, do you wish to speak to this?
I'm not sure where to put this, but with the tracks and trails, there is that work ongoing which we will get a report back next year. But one of the things that have come out of that, and it's similar to Marie, is this, this very bad signage for tracks and trails and whether we can look into that.
Well, can I, perhaps can I ask Mr Weskin?
The signage will be part of the strategic work that the group are doing on tracks.
Oh, cool, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Enterprise Dunedin?
Yes, your worship, I have a motion, just about to go up on the screen, and it's that council increases the budget for city marketing by $200,000.
Okay, is there a second of that? Councillor Wiley? Can I, if you're happy to hold speaking until I've cleared questions, then if you've got, are there any questions for the mover on this? Councillor Laufisso.
Thank you, your worship, I'm just, so this is over and above the money that we've just approved for the film marketing thing?
Yes, this is the amount that was, the budget was decreased by, I believe back in 2011, 12, Mr Christie may be able to provide some clarity on that?
Yeah, that is right, I'm the one that cut it.
Yep, the 1314 budget, yes, saw a $200,000 decrease in city branding and marketing.
Okay, are there any other questions?
And, and, sorry.
Councillor Elder?
Just a question to John. When you look at other budgets for other cities like Christchurch, et cetera, or comparative cities, how would our marketing budget compare?
Councillors recall, in the Martin Jenkins report, they did analyse our local marketing spend per ratepayer and per capita and we were pretty much on the median for that. I can recirculate those documents if you'd like.
But hang on, just slightly for a picture, we were on the median for New Zealand.
Yes.
The vast bulk of which don't market themselves as a tourism destination. So, I mean, it is an issue and it is an issue if you decide when we went through our All steer days, somebody had $500,000 that they used to be able to just, there was no tracking of it, it was just a person had a $500,000 budget and spent it wherever the demand arose during the course of the year and we trimmed that back. So currently, we trimmed it back, it currently sits at about 300. It would be fair to say, I think, that the vast bulk of cities that see themselves as tourism destinations have budgets noticeably higher than ours. We are at the extremely lean end of the spectrum for a city that sees itself as having a tourism, a strong tourism function. And, I mean, you've all seen some of the real difficulties and some of the real animosity, I guess, in the sector and initially it was absolutely aimed at tourism Dunedin and now it's aimed at Enterprise Dunedin and a lot of that is because this is a very, very scarce resource and so tourism sector, small tourism businesses and small hotels and motels cannot afford themselves to market themselves, to market the city outside the city. And you've seen the tourism sector's complaints to the government about the drop-off nationally in tourism numbers and blaming the government because the government pays to market the country. Hotel in Dunedin can't market New Zealand as a destination in Macedonia. They just, they just can't afford it. So this sector probably more than most others does rely on council, rightly or wrongly, and that's true around the country, relies on council to do city marketing to keep their throughput of visitors, both by plane, fit and independent, parents of students. The reason we bundled them all together was whether you come here for any of those reasons, you're still a tourist and potentially you then look to move and set on, you know, I'm one of those tourists, so, yeah. So I, I think even though we're middle of the country, we're certainly well below most of our tourism, well, rivals isn't quite the right word, competitors really for a limited tourism budget.
Thank you for that fulsome response.
So councillor Gary, do you wish to speak to this or do you want to let what the chief executive said stand?
Not. I would like to speak to it in addition to that.
It doesn't mean you put money in, it's just how the situation went on.
We had very clear, very clear submissions from the sector and in our visit Dunedin group, which has been formed as a result of the Martin Jenkins report, the advisory group, very clearly anticipated that there was a need for an increase in the city marketing budget. There is real concern that the amount of work needed to be done and often because of the provincial growth fund work, the staff are stretched and the resources scarce and there are more and more demands being put on ED from the sector. I'm very aware that as we consider various options today, money is scarce for these unbudgeted amounts. But as the person who holds the tourism portfolio around this council table and because the sector has lobbied us and submitted to us around this, I need to advocate and I committed to advocate for them. We have a large number of people who work in the tourism sector in our city and those people are on the increase. They're not only young people, they are also sometimes previously retired people. It's the whole spectrum. It's often an entry job for our young people and it's a very exciting sector to work in. As Chief Executive has talked about, often people who come and visit here then come to live here or invest here or work here and those areas overlap. So it's a very important part of the work we do here at council and one of the aims that we have is to grow our per capita income and to grow our population of the city and this certainly is related to that as well. If we think of the international students, those folk also bring visitors in here. So there are many, many overlaps and we need to have the resource to market sufficiently.
Councillor Lord?
Actually, I just had a question for the chief, if that's okay?
Yeah, sure.
So my question, chief, is, I understand all the ELT budgets and, look, I'm not opposed to putting this money in, but generally they go and contest and fight it out and you beat them down and they beat you back and that sort of thing. Do you feel this is an appropriate way of now giving another department more than you've already sort of agreed in the previous system? I know it's not big and the greater.
We, we told Johnny wasn't allowed to ask for this, so basically it was outside, you know, we, we can see the pressure on the budgets, it's All steer time. We, we had a pretty strong focus on core business and on some of the deferred stuff. So, and we knew that there were finance pressures, so this wasn't in John's remit, John didn't ask for this. We did have discussions and we know that there is pressure on the, on the marketing budget. Part of what came out of Martin Jenkins report was that we could possibly, if we were slightly better resourced in this area, there's the possibility, for example, marketing in Brisbane, which is entirely an aeroplane thing, people aren't driving across in their combi. That might be something we'd do a different way. We might talk to the airport who market in Brisbane and say, look, this is something that we could come to an agreement, that you do that work and we help boost the funding, for example, not with current levels of funding. So, look, I know you've got a wash-up tomorrow for, I'm not you, so you have to decide, but, but I can, I can see the frustration in the sector that you're all seeing spilling over. I mean, some of it is because it feels a bit dog eat dog, so there's not enough money to go around, so I'm going to be grumpy because I want more in my patch and I'm going to be grumpy and then, and then the numbers fall and it, there is no doubt this is an important part of our economic income as a city. Does it return more than its $200,000 worth? Undoubtedly. So the tourism spend in the city is big. A part of the pressure for us is managing that tourism pressure itself so that we don't kill the penguins, but, but that's firmly on our end and on our parks teams and so on, but.
Right, further speakers?
Would annually be added after the $200,000?
Increase of.
Annual budget, yeah, yeah.
So increases the annual budget?
Yes, the annual budget, that was the.
Right, order. So, in speaking to this, I think we've got to, the context here is the Martin Jenkins report, this is from my perspective, the Martin Jenkins report, which to some extent was in response to quite a bit of resentment and blame and finger pointing and possibly some of it justified at Enterprise Dunedin from the tourism sector saying, you're responsible for the fact that the city's not performing or whatever, regardless of whether that was right or wrong. The fact is, we went out and we said, okay, we're going to get an objective review of this and we got the Martin Jenkins report and it concluded, as the chief executive has said, that among other things, we were on the low end of spending, given our expectations as a city. Now, I don't see that, we can either say, I guess we can say, well, we accept the findings of that report, but we can't afford to fulfil them. But bear in mind that our enterprise team will continue to get blamed for a perceived lack of outcomes and lack of performance because we haven't followed the recommendations of the Martin Jenkins report. So I think we've just got to keep that in mind in looking at this. It's not a matter of, by any objective measure, we should be, as a city, we should be spending more on this if we expect the outcomes. And I'm just pointing out that if we aren't prepared to do that, we should make it clear that it's our call and that it's not the fault or responsibility of our team, we're working as hard as they can if the outcomes aren't achieved, when we've been advised that they need to be. Councillor Wiley?
Your worship, I would concur with your words on that because that was a big part of where I was thinking around the Martin Jenkins report. The other thing is, this is city marketing, it's not just tourism, it's the whole marketing spend and promotion of the city. Probably the one big outcome that I would want to see was back in 2011, 2012, tourism were injecting $600,000 in kind to support the promotion of the city and obviously most of that was geared around tourism. I'd like to see the tourism industry around the city increase their current in kind of 137%, $137,000, sorry, to. $137,000 in kind that tourism put in last year to increase that to match or work in line with the increase we have on the table here.
Further speakers? Councillor O'Malley?
I think the other thing to keep in mind when looking at this is that the Martin Jenkins report has come in after the long-term plan considerations. So it, we, other times, I've already said a couple of times why it wasn't the long-term plan, but in this instance, the recommendations have come in since the long-term plan. So this would be a good example of an exceptions kind of consideration.
Further speakers? Councillor Elder?
I suppose I asked that question at the beginning because I recognise that in fact as, as a destination city and as a great place to come to work, study and play, indeed that we do need to actually spend more on our marketing. If you compare us with other cities who are trying to do the same thing, we are on the low side and the Martin Jenkins report identified that. So I really support this, I think it's a great thing and it, like Andrew said, it spreads across a number of areas.
Councillor Hawkins?
Thank you, your worship. I can support this because it's not a tourism fund, because I think I would find that difficult to justify to this degree without any accompanying idea of how that money would be deployed. But in, but in supporting it, I guess, I just want to reiterate a point that's been made many times by our representatives from the Strath Tyrer, that I think we need to look at what it is that we are using and how it is that we are selling the city because it is bigger than the central city and the peninsula. And if we are interested in trying to, going back to tourism, trying to manage tourism growth that we are, that we are seeing in a more sustainable way, I can't see that happening unless we make more of an effort to spread people across, across the vast district that we have, far more so than we have seen in recent times. So that's, that's not a, that's a strategic decision, not a budgeting one, but I just wanted to flag that, you know, assuming that that is possible and I can only assume that it is, I'm comfortable with, with this money being put in because if it's done well, it could help solve some of the issues that we're seeing in some of our busier destinations that in some cases have quite terrifying growth trajectories ahead of them in the coming years. Thanks.
Okay, if there are no further, councillor, Gary, you moved this, sorry.
Thank you, and while I understand that we're at a point where the budget is tight and this is all extra and we're very mindful of our communities, this was something that we were asked for and I mentioned tourism because it was the tourist sector, the visitor sector, that submitted. So I just put that in context. We often round this table, have people asking us to do more and the, that sector is always asking us to do more in this space. This budget was decreased by that amount, so it's not just a figure picked out of the air, it's a figure to reinstate really the budget that was there previously. We have a responsibility to ensure that the recommendations of the Martin Jenkins report, that we address those and that is certainly happening. We are very shortly about to appoint a city marketing manager and with the appointment of that city marketing manager, there will be the opportunity to do more in this particular area. When I mentioned visitor, as I said, that overlaps with coming here to study, it overlaps with coming here to work, it overlaps with coming here to live and invest. And so it's about Dunedin as a destination and I could not agree more with my colleague councillor Hawkins. Alongside the desire to market the city more and have more resource to do so, there is also the matter within our community at the moment around social licence and around the impact that growing tourism numbers are having on our city. And so the way we market our city is really important. Last night, as I think I have possibly mentioned already, certainly individually.
Last night, as I think I have possibly mentioned already, certainly individually to some of you, I was at a presentation last night for Trees That Count. And yesterday, we talked about the Masters Games event, and about how might we offset the miles. Well, there's already a, a system in place that we could utilise called Trees That Count, you might have seen the advertisement on television, and we had a presentation to the visitor sector about that, it fits very well. So how we market our city to other domestic visitors, which after all are our biggest market, and overseas, this will enable us to do this and give us a resource to do that. So I leave it to the vote.
All those in favour, please say aye.
Division, division please.
Councillor Bensin-Pope?
Aye.
Councillor Elder?
Aye.
Councillor Gary?
Aye.
Councillor Hall? Councillor Hawkins?
Aye.
Councillor Laufeysoe?
Aye.
Councillor Lord?
Aye.
Councillor Newell? Councillor O'Malley? Councillor Stedman?
Yes.
Councillor Bendavis?
Aye.
Councillor Wiley?
Yes.
Councillor Wilson?
Yes.
Your worship?
Yes.
The motion has passed. Plating, the...
Carried, thank you. Well, I'll just keep going down the list. Outdoor recreation facilities. Three Waters. Archives. Councillor Bensin-Pope?
Well, we've been talking twice, and there is clearly an issue. I'm wondering if our chief executive or someone can give us an update on what clever solution we're coming up with?
Yeah, there are, there's work underway, Nick will just brief you.
Your worship, we've been engaged in dialogue across the various repositories across the city, including the Hocken, the DCC Holdings, Presbyterian Archives. That's been, that's indicated that we all have issues, and that there is a will for collaboration. The latest manifestation of that discussion is we're now in the, in the later stages of a survey of users in all of those repositories. That survey will be complete at the end of June, so we'll get a real sense of, of how people are using the archives, and crucially, how they're moving between archives to do the research they need to do. And we'll be looking to build on that to, with a discussion about whether there's a collaborative approach, both for access and for the storage of those repositories.
Can you tell, has, has anything been done at all since they last came to us about the dampness and the issues like that, the leaking pipes and so on? I heard there had been, but can, is you or David able to talk to that?
Yeah, I mean, I've been working with Mr Saunders, who has, is, is looking at a, an off-site solution, and they were going, she's going through that procurement process at this, at this stage. That's a short-term holding pattern until we actually come to a more substantive resolution.
But the work is underway?
It certainly is.
You don't need to move anything, thank you. Okay, um, community funding. Councillor Rockwell, have you got your hand up?
I put my hand up because I didn't think something, but for the outdoor recreation facilities, I wanted to see if we needed, I know we've gone past it, um, I'll send it to a weedy. Oh. Sorry. Yes. Um, sorry. It's just that, at the moment, there's an audit of playgrounds, and a lot of them are a wee bit run down. So I was just wondering whether we could have 50,000 extra, up to 50,000 extra, when they audit a playground, if, if something needs to be done, that, that we could do that? It's just that there's an audit going on at the moment.
So I guess the question would be, how would you decide to spend 50,000 if you hadn't finished the audit?
This might, this is, I just checked with Rob, there's a $1.6 million program for budget for playground renewals and upgrades over the next couple of years, so I think we're comfortable that carries it.
So there's money in the budget for, as they come up with order?
Thank you.
Okay, cool.
Enterprise Dunedin?
Um, currently, if we're at 1.8% growth, then it'll be 225,000 by 2050, if we maintain that rate. And if we went to 2.1% growth, we'd get 252,000. So in other words, if we grow pretty much at the rate we're growing at, and it stays around that, it will actually hit that number by 2050.
Without having to spend any money to do so.
Exactly.
I'm kind of glad I won't be here.
Another win for the chief executive.
I'm delivering it in. Oh, yeah, capital leadership.
Right. Local body elections, this is about special voting booths. I think that's within the jurisdiction of the returning officer, is it not?
There are plans in place for special voting booths in a range of facilities around the city. We haven't finalised them yet, but we are looking to be proactive.
So, and do you anticipate that what's going to happen will satisfy the request of this submission?
I can't guarantee that it will satisfy the request of the submission. What I can say is that we are looking to do things differently than we have in the past, and provide opportunities across the city for people to access voting facilities.
Thank you.
Just being one, we do have to be a little careful, so it could be argued by some that old people vote in a different pattern to young people, or Pakeha people to Maori people, and if we do things that deliberately encourage, we have to make sure, we, we have to look at what we're doing and who we're enabling, and trying to make sure that that is representative across the community, so that all our portions of the community have similar, have similar access. So this is an area that's traditionally been under, that are under vote, so it is one that is on our mind.
We're doing it not just for students, but so we're, we're looking at using the book class, we're looking at Mozgill, Southend, in all sorts of places, but on a roving way, so that we're something certainly in the campus area, but not permanently, just, so...
So with regard to this, I'm going to allow questions unless someone has got a particular resolution they want to put. So councillor Stedman, and then councillor Laufeysoe.
I was just pointing out that councillor Laufeysoe was trying to get your attention.
Ah, that's two birds with one stone. Councillor Laufeysoe?
Thank you, your worship, thank you councillor Stedman. I, I just wanted to know, in terms of your work program, it doesn't need a resolution? In terms of what you're doing already?
Thank councillor Elder.
So was the intention also to use all the public libraries, et cetera?
Well, we, I think that what's been explained is they don't...
All of those things will be looked at.
Thank you. Resource consents? So that's, it's in the work program? All right. Waste minimisation, to subsidise cloth nappies? That's fine, but I'm, no further interest in... I assure you, I have no further interest. I don't do, I don't do nappies. Yet.
I think you should have asked.
Yet. But it's time. Okay. Well, that comes to the end of the funding requests, and so far as I can see, the only remaining agenda item is the completion of the annual planned deliberations and decision-making, and that is what we have already determined we will...
So I just, I just want to remind, before we get too excited, don't go out and tell people that these things are in the budget, because until we know what that says about your rates, and what that says about ins and outs, and what's CapEx and what's OpEx, you may have some discussions tomorrow about, okay, well, that one's less important, that one comes out, or we cut that, or whatever. So I just want to bear that in mind before we go and Facebook that something was successful, bear in mind that tomorrow it might not be. So that was all. I mean, it might be, but it's not definitive until we, until you guys, we put the motion tomorrow, and you guys vote tomorrow, that's all.
Unless it's a policy decision that we've made.
Yes, yes, yes.
I'm only talking about funding decisions, yeah.
So we'll reconvene at nine o'clock tomorrow, will we?
Well, now, that's, that's the other thing we have to determine.
The start of five was nine.
Nine o'clock?
Nine's fine.
Nine o'clock tomorrow morning, please, and this gives start. I don't want you second guessing the start, they've decided nine o'clock's fine. So I move that we adjourn the meeting. Second to councillor Stedman, all those in favour, please say aye. Against, carried.